Father, we thank you for a little laughter, a little joy before we start. As we, someplace the Lord may not be able to laugh, but we thank you that our city is blessed. And we're just safe here and we thank you for tonight. As we conduct this business, we pray that your spirit will be here with us, that we can do the right things. We give you praise and thanks in Jesus' name.
Amen. Place the flag, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here and having the crowd tonight. We'll call the meeting to order with all members present. Everybody have a chance to look over the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Redd, second from Johnny, that we approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Force of the officers. Tim?
Yes, sir. We've finished paving Valley Hill Road, the portion that we're gonna do anyway. The portion on the south end, Fire Grass telling me they're probably gonna start by the end of August or first of September. So we've got any questions, that's their schedule. On our paving list, y'all can look at the list. I've got, we've got everything done down in Valley Hill Road. The additional ones that's highlighted are what we've added. We can do all of those plus 5,000 feet of house and loop and still be within the budget. What we got planned is, we're gonna think about two weeks, try to get caught up with our other projects, and then we'll start back paving. So if anybody wants to ride and look at these, just wait until we can look at them. That's all we've got.
Neil, Greg?
I need to, I'm gonna meet with Mike and Chris and try to come up with a plan and present it to the committee about the splash pad. I know we talked about the hours for the school start and making some changes to that, so I'll be doing that in the next couple of days. Want to give you a little bit more of an update. I try to keep y'all updated on the complex. Chris and Scott are doing an outstanding job along with the rest of the guys at the complex, and they're up to 37 tournaments for this year. So I know we've got another big one this past weekend, so I'm making sure that I send that list to the hotels and to the church association as well. So really proud of what they've been able to do and the money that they're bringing in for our city and for the complex. I met today with the mayor and talked with Andy a couple of times, and Rocky had emailed about the lease agreement we met today and made a couple of changes. And Rocky, I'll email those to you in the morning. So we'll have that. Really don't know if we need to wait till later or we want to do it now. Since the lease is supposed to go into effect on August the 1st, and the next council meeting is August the 2nd, once those changes are made, like I said, we've had Coach Foster there. I've met with Randall this morning and met with the mayor this afternoon and talked to Andy. I, we may want to look at, I recommend that we do authorize the mayor to, once Rocky has an opportunity to look at the lease and say that it's good to go, I would think that we may need to authorize the mayor to enter into that agreement.
Yeah, I haven't got a problem with that.
The mayor on condition that Rocky signs off on it?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we authorize the mayor to enter today. Please, so that Rocky take care of his work, I'll take care of it.
Is there a motion? Second from Walter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you. And the swimming pool closing, we're closing the swimming pool because of the school start day and losing a lot of our lifeguards and our pool management. We were closing the pool on Sunday, July 31st. Been working on the preliminary parts of the budget for parking right in the golf course, and did get an estimate today on the Spring Grove that Mike's been working on with Buck, and I think he, when we get through it, I think he wants to tell you a little about that.
Oh, what was that? Just a quote?
Yes, just a quote.
Well, you know, that's kind of a bit...
Well, I mean, we're just getting some prices to try to see how much it's gonna cost. It was just a cost estimate, so we would have a ballpark figure to work with, so we knew we'd been asked to get that information.
We're just trying to figure out, you know, if it's feasible to do exactly what we want to do, and what's ballpark what it's gonna cost when it comes to time to do it, we will send that out forbid.
Yeah, one thing, we're taking old bleachers out of the, at the gym, the gym. Same in the lumber, there's gonna be a lot of steel and all that kind of stuff. Can we just scrap it?
We need to clear a third plus to scrap it, yeah. I mean, it's not worth anything, just...
If it's just trash, it's gonna be a bit of it.
Yeah, keep the lumber and use it for something.
Well, it's just near the tip of the old blade. We thought we could use it some more money. Madly, you know, it's all cut up, it's pipe and angle iron and that type of stuff.
Would you put surplus that way out?
Yeah, I'd say so. That wasn't called one thing, it's been...
Yeah, he'll need, that way he'll know what to do with it instead of putting it in that 30-yard roll off and sitting out front, because those metal frames, there was a pretty good bit of that.
He'll scrap the, scrap the metal steel part and keep the wood part to use somewhere else.
Oh, that would be great.
Well, why don't we say just save anything that's usable?
Well, that's, that's the one.
Clear.
Not where you do it, what's your...
Yeah, right.
That's just, that's the material inside, with what it's having to do.
Oh, wait.
Surplus the whole of it, or... Surplus.
I guess we'll end the motion. Motion from Johnny.
Second.
Second from Randall, that we declared the bleachers. Surplus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Building surplus? Clear that building surplus?
In order to lease it, I don't think, I don't believe we did.
You need a motion to do that, or lease it.
So moved, taken.
Motion from Walter, second from Randall, that we declared the building, that we're gonna lease. Surplus?
And the field, too.
And the field. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Greg. Chief?
I would say business as usual, but all y'all know, business is not usually a police and anybody else's first responder at this point in time, but I have nothing to report.
Did you, uh, did you by any means go down and check that link address for that street light that we were talking about?
It's a little bit dark down there.
I'll get what you had to the meeting, you take it.
No, no.
Quick update on the fire engines, the 28th, next week, Thursday, I'll be going down to Ashland, Alabama. It's where the fire trucks will be, fire engines. Well, there'll be one down there. It's gonna be the one tied up in Grant. I'll go down the 28th, I'll inspect it per our specs. I'll accept it at that time. Then the shelving and all the equipment will be mounted and placed in the truck. We should get the truck about three to four days after I accept it. When I accept it, that, that fulfills the contractual issue of the contract, I guess. And it's our truck, but we don't have to pay for it until it lands in Alhambra in Fort Payne. So it should be in Fort Payne around the 3rd and 4th August, and then we'll cut a check, pay them. The next truck will fall short after that. It'll, it'll probably be coming into state about the time that one, the first one's coming from Ashland up here to Fort Payne. So we're getting closer. Should be, the next meeting, we should have both of them, at least one of them on premises.
Second, we'll get a week or two of the virtual level?
That's what I'm anticipating to happen. Then after I get them both here, we're trained and we have them in service, I'll make a recommendation to you that we surplus engine four, which is actually out of Fisher at the, on Man's States. We give it to the school board at that time to use in their career intake program. Other than that, nothing going on.
Um, probably you have any thoughts?
No.
Eight? Okay, there's somebody said they had...
That's Mike, that's him.
One thing, last Tuesday, Walter came over with the Lions Club, and I presented the Lions Club with the idea we have on the, on the Spring Grove Park project, which is to develop a basketball court pulling and put a B and over, kind of turn that place into a, a multi-use type facility, something for where people can come if they wanna have, similar what we've got over there, not, not quite that big a scale. Anyway, I've got Buck, working with Buck, and he got, he got the price for the materials, or the B, which is 60 by 100 by 20, which is pretty big. He got these, this is the price he got Manny Smith. Now, this is us, this would be us purchasing the materials and then bucking him, putting the building up. And of course, now we can get bids. I don't know, that'd be up to y'all, but what, are we gonna start getting bids on?
I, maybe I misunderstood, but I, the way I read that was that, that price includes the installation?
Correct, yeah.
Correct? What does it say on the quote? What does it say on the quote?
That was, did he put it on the quote?
What does it say on the quote?
He didn't send it to Greg, and then my guy was the cop. But when I talked to Buck, he said that was him, put it up. I had a bucking him, put it up.
So we can, we can clarify that.
We can clarify that.
Yeah.
But the, uh...
Well, Mike, let me, excuse me, interrupt you.
No. That thing's gonna have to be, whether we do it or...
Right.
Material costs alone is gonna be beyond it.
This is basically keeping an ideal.
Probably gonna require some engineering problems.
Right. Price that I got from him on materials and things, I mean, we're not, we're not close to starting the project. This was just kind of like where his cost was, right? Some is, some is real now, yeah. I'm sorry, $64,000 on that. And the concrete, which was 100 by 60, was, is $15,000, six-four. So roughly, we're looking at around $8,000.
Because we've got, we've got a bill, an annual bill of concrete.
This was finished concrete, this was concrete finished, joints cut and everything on that. So, anyway, with meeting with the, with the Lions Club, they seem to be pretty excited about being a part of it. Once I get with Steve at Parsons, they're on, on the project committee. I'm trying to give him a call and meeting him to see basically what kind of money we're talking about that they're willing to be donating towards that project.
Kind of backing it up a little bit, too. Mike and Mayor and myself went down to Douglas area. We were talking about upgrading the park down there, and we couldn't get the citizens down there to kind of agree with what we're, we're wanting to do. But they wanted a facility to maybe have some after, after-school programs for the children and maybe have a little facility, so this is just gonna work out just right. Then we, we, we got the front end for the basketball court being torn out, you know, and the housing project decided that it was unsafe to be there. So I think it's a win-win that we can come right down, right up to, on the other end of the community and just put this in with the Lions Club help. There's some, there's a group of citizens in Douglas that wants to meet with us when we go down and actually have like a little ceremony down there. So I think it's a, it's a good win. Kudos to Mike and, and the rec department for putting this together. So hopefully we can fund it. We did shut down the basketball play that was over at Wallace, and we decided as a group that we would, would use some of those funds that we were expending per year to fund the project like this. So I mean, it's something we kind of agreed on, these guys took, followed around with it. So thanks a lot, Mike, for everything you're gonna do. I hope we can get this thing started and get it moving pretty quick, be anywhere we gotta do, Andy. Get everything done right and get it...
The, uh, we've pitched up on the dog, the waste stations, and Trish, they want to come by and get some pictures taken. And she asked me if we're physically going pet or dog friendly. And I said, well, I need to make sure to verify that. And we discussed putting them in, signs being up, no dogs, and this kind of soul. Are we physically going dog friendly in our parks?
I think that's what we discussed doing, but they had to be leashed within the parks.
That's why I wanted to check beyond, that's why I needed to do that.
But I think that's what we discussed, was, was making the parks that friendly, but that would be required to leash.
So when you say they need to draw up the orders to that effect?
To be in the existing ordinance. The way the existing ordinance only allows pets at Spring Grove.
For a grow-up.
We're gonna allow it at all season parks?
Yes.
Right now, we have stations in our parks. We're looking at it today. I think we need to add two more. I need to add, I have to look at where you can enter the parks through City Park and then on Little Dance and the Walker Park. And I think I'm, I need, I look at the two up at City Park. We got one of them, just if you're parked at the, over at the depot. It just, as you walk through the gate, that's the first thing you're gonna see. Same thing at, at Walker Park, and then at the Spring Park, Spring, Spring Grove. Those are cans, we need to have one entrance each one of those, which is the first thing you see when you come into the parks. I need to, I probably need to add one right in front of the entrance to the B, because here, thinking that we have bunches down there, we got a lot of people bringing their dogs in on leashes, and I need to add another one to the...
Mike, is there any, any place where you double dogs?
Anyway, that, it's something we're gonna have to address because even at the complex, right now, the complex, we don't allow pets in the complex. But you still come into the service dogs, you know, if they have a service dog, you know, we have to let them in.
We're not talking about including the complex in this...
No, well, not, not at this point, no.
So they have to be leashed at all times?
It's not like it'd be easier just to state they're allowed. Except, yeah, just exclude the, you know, the...
Yeah, okay, we'll do that. So do we need, do we need to authorize him to purchase two more of these stations?
Yes.
I don't think so, that's, that's what he's recommending?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Mike to purchase two more of these dog stations to complete the project.
We have a motion. Awesome. Second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'll listen to the camera.
Mr. President, I have one other thing. Couple of weeks ago, I may be aware, Andy, that the Alabama Fire College and Tuscaloosa contact me and told us that our agreement on the driving signature had expired. And I forgot about it, but they contacted me again. We need to do something. We need to maybe get the agreement out, let Rocky look at it. And they wanted another agreement to transfer it over to them, which is in their possession solely, and then they can pay us what we're out for that.
If you recall, guys, the, the agreement was they would reimburse us for the cost of insurance. So what we'll have to do is break our overall policy down, see if we can, I'll call Andy and see if they can plug out that, if we're out of what the college would have been over these three years.
Three years.
Three years. Whatever our costs were, but they also want to, I think you talked to their attorney?
Not three years ago, yeah.
Yeah, well, they want another agreement saying now it's, not an agreement, just saying now it's theirs. They want something.
Part of it is, we should tell them to send us what they want. And then also send them the agreement from three years ago, do it like a, look at it and see what they want, so we're willing to sign.
Okay, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Okay, payments and accounts.
I'd like to try to satisfy the account, please.
Second.
Motion from Johnny, second from Redd, that we write out the accounts, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second from Mike.
Motion carried. All right, on to business. First thing we have is authorizing the use of election system and software Model 100, and election system and software auto-marketing the upcoming municipal election.
This is something that the league has recommended years past, we've just had a resolution stating what's the type of the machines, model numbers and so forth. This election cycle, they recommended that we adopt an ordinance to that effect.
But this is the...
These are the, these are the machines that's been in place for quite some time now. The auto-mark is the disability machine. Somebody comes in with disability, that's the machine that they use.
Motion approved.
We'll have to, we'll have to suspend the rules.
We'll suspend the rules.
We have a motion from Redd that we suspend the rules and go in the, and the second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Rules are suspended, now a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Thanks.
Redd, second from Randall, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Resolution authorizing the application for state revolving funds through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management to be used for wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
Back in December, we all authorized lab environment to file a pre-apply. And if they did, and it was approved, now this is simply authorizing the application itself.
Any discussion?
Have you looked over this, Ralph?
Yes.
Are there any problems you see with it?
No, sir.
This is something we've gotta do, and we will probably give, forgive this on about $475,000 on it, it's free money. The other 600 or so has to be handled through the state revolving fund, fund at 2.2% interest, so over payback over 20 years, I think what was it, about 38?
Yeah, 38 months of the year.
It's too good a deal, not even to... Of course, we don't have it, this is just asking that we apply the application.
All right, any other discussion?
The civil revenue is at a sufficient amount to cover this payment.
Second? Motion from Johnny, second from Walter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, on to business. Parked and transferred to discuss the purchase of accounting software.
This is just a follow-up on what we discussed at our public meetings, because y'all had asked about whether or not it had to be bid. That company is only nationally recognized co-op. And Rocky has also given you a letter to say, in his opinion, it does not have to be bid.
Any motion to purchase?
So moved. Taken.
Motion from Walter, second from Redd, that we move ahead with purchasing this software. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Council President Goggins to open discussion about changes to personnel policy. There are a couple of things that Walter and I have just discussed with the police department, and it would, it would also affect, you know, mostly first responders, but a couple of things. And I think most of these things, they deal with money, they'll have to be changes related to the personnel policy. We've talked about dropping the debris bottle rate starting paid for police officers. The second thing was, uh... Event time.
With what?
Event time, the automatic overtime for event paid.
Take-home cars.
Yeah, I don't think that would have anything to do with the personnel policy, but we've talked about expanding the take-home cars for, for police officers to encompass a 15-mile radius from, from the city hall. But the biggest thing is the personnel policy, and I think, I guess Jessica or Andy or something, I guess what we're trying to do is authorize you guys to make the personnel policy to drop the pay, drop that one pay, eliminate the...
The adjustment, how you say it?
We've basically eliminated that bottom.
Are we still leaving it?
For the crawl.
I'm sorry, for, um, Jay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so just dropping the one category.
Ten, Dave, you tell what you got to talk to.
Yes. And then, uh, doing the event pay.
And, and are y'all gonna get a list together of what is considered a beacon?
Yes.
Yes. So I guess that's what we're doing, huh, Ron? Okay.
Mike, those changes, once you submit them to us, then we'll bring them back. Future council, they will adopt the amendments.
Everybody's good with letting him have it, right?
What Randy, what do you, what Randy say on that?
It was about 10 or 11 events that we decided we'd come up with, that were mandated by the city that we have to bring guys in to work overtime. It doesn't count, we have a 129-hour threshold, I think, now that they have to meet in order to get overtime. But if I bring a man out, he has work boom days for 10 to 12 hours. We wanted that to be dedicated overtime paid for good.
It does not add to the 129, so when it, when they did reach 129, it'll be because, it won't be because they counted that, so that won't be double-dipped.
Basically, it's any time we tell them they have to be there.
And there's, there's several things, like all the 5K runs that we have to provide people for boom days, football games, Fourth of July, Christmas parade, Veterans Day parade.
If you'll get us that list together, we can, you know, add that to the, the policy.
Guys, I've spent my career in law enforcement, my family, a lot of the members of my family have. And I think any time that a person is required to come out and work on their off day, that they should be compensated for it. At this day and time, right now, the way the society is with the police, being attacked for no reason, you know, they're, they're not overcompensating. None of the first responders are. So I, I feel like we should compensate for that.
And Mr. President, that's gonna involve my department as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna affect you quite as much.
They want to save me on events like it does Randy, but could I also add to the emergency recall? When we need them to come back and work in emergencies?
Like, like you have a serious fire and they call that extra.
Will we put on off-duty?
Will you, you, you start us a list, and then let's get with you. Maybe, maybe it's time we sat down and eat, have a meeting, and we can talk about all those things, anything that you want to bring up, and then we'll make sure we get it added to the policy as well. Any other discussion?
Is that only gonna, let's say, fire and police, or is that not for each of you? Or is that just for them?
It's pretty much just for those guys because of their high threshold of overtime. Eight-hour employees, you know, they're over...
It, it, it penalizes our department if some of our big guys come in and work on a holiday, and then they don't get their, a lot of time, we pay overtime, if that's the...
Well, we can talk about that. Yeah, we...
And how we, we work a lot of off days, a lot of...
Well, we're not here to shortchange you, so we'll, we'll get together. It was brought up primarily because these guys, eight-hour employees get overtime after 40 hours, you know. So typically, when they work on a Saturday or whatever, they are getting overtime. But if it's a time they're not, we, we can definitely talk about it. But these guys, you know, they have to work 129 hours before they have any overtime.
I understand that, I'm just saying, I mean, it needs to be looked at.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we can look at that depth and make sure that, that there's something we're missing there, certainly. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. Mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I've got several things to update on. The old hospital, we've been having joint meetings with EPA, TERCO, et cetera. And it looks like our best approach on that is to go for a series of grants, of CD, well, block grant, HUD grant, EPA. We're meeting next week with EPA in Atlanta to see what they're willing to do. There's asbestos in that place. We got an estimate on a survey just to see how much it was. It's like $4,700, just to check and see what's there. And EPA probably will pay for that. We, we're trying to get everything in order before we rent them in, go into the bank in Boston and say, you know, we, we want to take this, but we don't want liability unless we know what's gonna happen. But the way it's looking right now, we can tear the newest part of the building down, leave the original part of the building, which is built a lot better and what have you. It will meet storm shelter requirements. The basement of that building could be a storm shelter, the top of the building could be a community center. HUD funds some community centers, and EPA funds some others, and FEMA funds part of it, too. So it's gonna be a real complicated process and probably takes several years to do. But to get the money just to do the demolition is just out of question, really, that's not gonna do it. So that's the way we're approaching it. Once that's done, the back part of the parking lot can be... Once that's done, the back part of the parking lot can be, uh, a community playground. And we would probably, uh, I don't know, would we wanna give this to the, uh, housing authority or how we'd wanna work it, but we wanna get rid of that old building. And that's about the only way that we've come up with. We, we've looked at it, at the brownfield site, it possibly could be because there's like five or six fuel tanks in the ground, and plus the asbestos too, so that, that gets back in the EPA's way, so we'll, maybe we'll make some headway on that. Uh, I asked, uh, I think I sent Robert, uh, Rod, Rocky, a, uh, excuse me, contract with this video company that, uh, uh, was gonna put a, a video on their website free, and I asked Eric to check it out as far as Scottsboro's got that same one. I think someone in your office wrote the contract, looked at it pretty good. Eric, do you wanna add to what you found out about it?
I spoke with Scottsboro, uh, their IT director had no, no issues with the company, the, uh, contract's pretty cut and dry. Um, the, no, as long as we let them run that on their server, we don't have a security issue, so I give it thumbs up.
It's just like a link, in other words. Yeah. So, uh, anyway, uh, that's a contract, there's no, uh, charges, it can be terminated anytime. We have the, uh, right to deny whatever advertising that we don't want. So I'd like to recommend we go ahead and sign that contract and get it started. Anybody gone on, look at Scottsboro's?
No, I haven't.
Okay, it'd be a, be a good deal. Nothing has gotta be done tonight, maybe, but, uh, just go to Scottsboro's website, and it'll be on the front page of one side of it.
But we'll put that maybe on the next council meeting, let them get some more time to look at it.
Just like I say, there's no hurdles.
What it is, is a contract with a company that makes a video of the city of Fort Payne. And the way they, the way they make money is by going to the merchants and asking, trying to sell advertisements, et cetera, to them.
Our local.
Our local merchants, I guess it's our local merchants. Uh, I don't have the contract in front of me right now, but we did review it, and you know, the only issue you would have from the city's standpoint is, uh, i- i- if there was some problem between them and your merchants. Apparently, I, I haven't talked to anybody in Scottsboro, but apparently they have.
Where are these folks at, of?
Pretty Florida, I think. Hopefully, I don't have it with me either.
But it's like a lot of the things that people go and produce, like football schedules, and then you buy ads on them. So that's basically what it is, only it's, in a, in a, the nature of the video that we can then put on our website.
Scottsboro is a good example, so take a look at, and the advertising mostly is just logos they may have had on each page, two or three small logos.
Or the logo's only on the video, or the logo's on the website?
They're on the video.
Oh, they're on the video.
They're only on the video?
Yeah.
They're down below the, the video screen, and on the sides and plenty.
Probably was dealing in that contract that, you know, plowed the city of Georgia.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it, it, it basically, what, what you do is basically say that they wanna go be able to go to the merchants and say, we've approved this, but it's not exclusive. So, I, uh, well, you probably need to just send them all a copy of the contract, it's, uh, it's actually, uh, pretty much in English as opposed to legalism. And so, uh, but I think you probably just let all, let them take a look at that contract and see what it says the city's doing.
It's pretty straightforward.
It's just a, there's nothing illegal about it, there, there are no legal problems doing it, uh, any problems would be practical problems that y'all can make a judgment about, uh, as well as I can. But from the legal standpoint, uh, there, there's no prohibition or reason you couldn't enter into it, it's just, uh, it, it does, and, and that's why they wanna do it for you is because they then say, we've got a contract with the city to do this, and we'd like to sell you some advertising. So.
Well, is that something we really wanna do on a new website for a bunch of advertising though?
Well, it's not a bunch of advertising, but it's, uh.
Let's just call it video, it, it's not.
Red, it's not, it's not on our website. You will get a.
Put a link to it here?
You'll get a redirect link to walk in a video player outside of our website.
In a new tab.
In a new tab, and that's where the ads appear.
Okay. So it's not actually then a lot?
Correct.
It would just like now, if we wanted those Board of Education, we could link those Board of Education. Uh, I also got information through Tarkov that there was a grant available to do some more LED lights, building lights. And, uh, I haven't, I just wanted to mention it because I haven't just got this in the air so far. I haven't had time to talk to Tarkov to see exactly what it would cover and what it wouldn't cover. Uh, it does, uh, say community oriented buildings, public accessible buildings, which would, like this office, what have you. So that might be something that we wanna do, uh, following across this good street life situation. I, I've just got one other thing, well, two other things. Uh, are all these winter tanks gonna be in to replace that, what?
It's gonna be in, uh, tomorrow or Friday, Wednesday, Friday. And then I have to run the fuel out of the old tank, and then I have to get mid, mid-south testing to come over here when we remove the tank to get soil samples to make sure there's no spillage, but I'm gonna try to run all the fuel out of it as possible, and then pump what other I can get out, and then, uh, start planning on where to mount this. I got thirty days to, to notify ADM when we start to do that process and mount a new one. And then I've got Lad calling me wanting to know what type of piping and all this kinda stuff, but, you know, I told him, I said, I don't know yet until this pad that I have will work, or I have to build another pad to put it there. And, uh.
We'd have to have a containment.
It is self, it's a self-contained, it's above-ground tank, uh, um, it's, it's got alarms on it and all this kinda stuff. It's a two thousand gallon fuel tank. But, um, it's just, uh, one of those things.
I got a letter here that, uh, we don't get a lot of good comments, so when we do, we gotta share them with everybody. Let me just read it. "I wanted to take a moment to commend everyone involved in the recent Fourth of July festivities that supports the whole thing. My wife, for thirty-six years, was born in Fort Payne. We live in Chattanooga, but recently built a new home in Mendon that we're blessed to enjoy there every weekend. We fully supported the local economy as we built the house. Builders supplying many others in Fort Payne benefited as a result. Local builder Scotty Vaughn was our general contractor. The reason for my note today is to let you know how much we enjoyed the Fourth of July event. It was so different from similar events we have attended in our areas, even hearings have moved. Everyone was so friendly, well, I'm pleasant to be around. There were no rude patrons disturbing the peace for others. Multi-generational families enjoyed great time together. There was no violence, no public indoctrination, no obscene language being shouted across the crowd. What we did see was a large group of hard-working people assembled together to celebrate our nation, our blessings, and our freedom. It was so nice to get to share an evening without having to worry about what someone in the crowd might do. Thank you so much for working to put together such an enjoyable evening, with great music, good fun, amazing fireworks, and heartfelt celebration. We look forward to meeting more special times to enjoy in Fort Payne, and it's signed Nelson Burke." So I, that's somebody who pushed that. And, uh, other than a couple of, as far as first, well, we hired two more part-time people, that's, that was it.
Mayor.
Andy, did you have a letter or something that you got to chill and just to read that I talked about? Wasn't there something Walter?
Yeah.
The letters.
Did they ask, I mean, good report from the officers, we talked about doing that? Yeah, I mean, it's a couple of things that some guys did, uh, helped some people change some tires and stuff, and I don't have them with me, I'll bring them, I'll try to get them next week. Lee has them in his office, so.
Your table, next time, what's your lead address those?
You don't wanna do that, because I, I also have been doing a lot of good things, and with everything that's going on right now in the nation, we just wanna promote them here in, uh, in our council meetings, and let everybody know some of the things that they're doing that are really nice, so, and she's gonna get that together, and, and they're on top of that, so we're looking forward to it. You know, you'd be surprised some of the things the guys do. The other night, I had to get a ride to get in my car, because I, the nurse was at the hospital, and I'm like, how am I gonna get in my car to the shop? I called the guys, they're getting a ride. So it's just simple things like that that make you feel good about, the guys, they're there to check, but they also let us serve, so I'm looking forward to that report. I couldn't find you, Red, I got it.
All right. Uh, that's it for the, does anybody from the audience have anything?
I wanna say something. The video company that you're talking about, Dune, why would we ever go with an outside company to allow them to come in here and sell ads? I mean, we just had a, you guys had a great meeting with Matthew Morgan from WLW, I'm sure they would love the privilege to do a video.
Well, actually, just a moment ago, while he was talking, Rocky and I were kinda whispering, but that's kinda what I was talking about, you know, why, why wouldn't we shake with those guys and see locally and see what they?
I mean, they could do a great video, and it could be on your website, and then maybe some, I just think it's better to shop local.
That's what we were just talking about. One thing he did bring up, you know, of course, the, with these guys, it, it cost us nothing, all their money's worth to advertise, we'd have to pay these other guys, but it would still be something, I think, we would definitely talk to them about, so.
But if our sponsor didn't let them, you know, and they didn't sell it that way, that this is gonna be on, you know, portman.org, then that's a great selling point.
Yeah, very good point, very good point. Uh, once the video is made, that's the expense of it, and, uh, uh, that's a very good point.
I mean, I just think it's worth talking to them before we talk to anybody else. Shop local.
Yeah, every one of those, all their dollars are shop local, so that's what we think to do.
And somebody to help small businesses too, I'm trying to talk to guys, we need to, we need to really focus on that. We give big grants for companies coming in, but small businesses like that are about to go under. We need to be looking for ways to, to help them, you know, remain successful and starting up, so hopefully we can look into that, consider these guys. That, that's what's making the downtown merchants go, these people willing to start up their own business, get their own franchise, and some of the startup fees are just, they're telling about it's just, I'm gonna go back and start a business. So let's keep that in mind. Good point, Richard.
Eric, uh, how would you have to arrange a server in a case like that?
Well, we don't want it on our website, we want it on their server, for security reasons. We've got too much stuff to keep secure.
That's right.
It would have to be a redirected, their server.
I'm, I'm still pretty certain that could be arranged.
Yes, it should be able to.
Okay.
Yeah, one more thing. Uh, we've had some people asking about renting the marquee at the theater for political ads. This is something we've never done, and, uh, I don't think we wanna, we wanna go there. Trying to stay away from that because we don't, we don't want to look like we're taking sides or anything like that, so as long as I've been here, we've never done that, and I don't think we're gonna change. So just weren't mentioning that, we're out, everybody will.
Thank you, Johnny.
Okay, well, that concludes our meeting. We do need to go to executive session to discuss a potential real estate transaction and litigation.
Yes, I hear. Have we found anything on our study inside of the book?
Well, let's start rocking, guess what we're working on? Actually, uh, the, uh, Joel Moon that I mentioned at our work session was actually in your work session, watching you all come on. And so, and Andy and I talked to him, and he's given me a book on Alabama's Best Manager Practices for Forestry, and he gave Andy one, and we're gonna go through that, and then, uh, next week sometime, we're gonna sit down with you.
Good.
So where are moving on that, from anybody?
Oh, yeah, we're in a motion. Got a motion? Second from Randall, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys.